Beef, yeah beef's gonna go up.
Stop going up smoothly, I hope.
He goes, yes.
You're divine and everything going smoothly.
I think so.
Yeah.
Did anybody look at the code? Like, did you look at one thirty-four seventeen?
I did, I read everything.
One thirty-four seventeen?
Yes, and I have brought a copy. No, I read the whole code.
Just for your application?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure there was nothing creeping around in there.
That was last week, I was thinking, did I miss a meeting? Asking myself all the way through, did I miss a meeting?
You did, in fact.
I did?
Yeah.
Last week?
Not last, or the week before.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
I had one, there was a meeting with the historical, no, 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 the zoning board and everybody else.
Yeah, that was a special one.
That was before that. That, we had one, yeah, we had that one, plus then we had the next Thursday was our regular meeting. That was not a regular meeting. Well, we meet the second and the fourth, second and the fourth Thursday.
So that's the eighth we should have one. The, the one I came was March one.
The first. Right, because that was a special meeting, that wasn't our date.
Ah.
That was the zoning board's day that we joined them.
Okay, I did, I felt so, you know, I, I kept asking myself, did I miss a meeting?
We'll get started. Okay, we'll call it order, the March twenty-second meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board, uh, chair's remarks, uh... We, I think I, I sent everybody the response to Butterfield. Yeah, so you guys have that, basically just to kind of document, but also to be very clear that, you know, we're not looking at any of the approvals that are in place, but just to kind of talk about, what, what was understood, what the events were. Obviously, the arborists all agreed that the tree should come out, and so we gave them the go-ahead to take the tree out. Uh, I did just ask them if they could shed some light on the arborist comment that his protection plan for the tree was that the tree would be a certain distance from, you know, from the corner of building five, which seems to be very different. So based on substantial conformity, part of the discretionary zoning change, I was actually on the board at the time, was defining substantial conformity, and it had to do with you couldn't, basically that there would be a site plan that would be approved, and the residents would have some expectation that it would look like that when it was built, before they give a discretionary zoning change. And so that was, um, substantial conformity was, we sent it over to the planning board at the time, um, I was on the village board at the time, to ask for them to kind of define it, and they gave us, you know, feet and degrees. So I just said, you know, it, we do have, at least have to kind of clear up why the arborist believes, um, that something is different. Not, not because of the tree, the tree is already gone, we're not, there's no bringing the tree back. But certainly for us to know that they are complying with the site plan, which is really just a code enforcement issue, that we'll just make code enforcement aware that, you know, that there is this, there's this question, and obviously the, they can't move buildings that much, uh, it's about ten feet. So they have that letter, so they'll, they'll probably proceed. Um, I did ask that even though we're, the, the aman, the easement really just talks about trimming the tree because the tree overhangs into the two residential lots. It doesn't talk about kind of other things, one of them being replacement, removal or replacement. So I said, you know, we, while it's not in there, it's not clear. I mean, obviously the village is involved, there's an easement in place, so we should, we would like to be involved in the, the selection of a, a specimen in size of the replacement tree. And also if they want to consider that it might be somewhere else. I mean, it was kind of a lot of stuff jammed in there, it may not be the best place for a tree. Clearly, a tree that gets that big and starts to overhang and, over into the other yards, where, where you can't really trim a tree, especially for such a small backyard. I'm not sure if they're open to that, so we'll, we'll see what their response is.
Yeah, the other thing I thought too, Matt, was where that tree is, you know, where the, the existing tree is, the copper birch, it's kind of like behind the building, you know, so it's in a pocket where it's not gonna get any sunlight.
It's, yeah, it's not a great.
So I mean, to put a new tree there or new trees, whatever they're gonna do, kind of really defeats the purpose, unless we move it.
I mean, they may want some sort of a specimen tree for that courtyard, isn't there, outdoor courtyard for the, uh, for the community room?
Right.
Any senior housing requires that you have a community's, you know, a common, uh, common room, um, a certain percentage of the square footage. So I think there's a, there's part of it they wanted outside. And so I think they wanted a tree by that, that they could put a different tree there, a, a massive tree in that area. But we'll see, it's, it's up to them, and they, we don't, we have no rights to kind of force them to do, but if, you know, if, I just asked them if they would consider it, so we'll see what their response is.
But it won't be a while, because those things are still not there. It, how long does it take them to build anything around that area, when the?
Oh, right now they'd just be doing removal, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just removal at this point. Yeah, no, they're not gonna be replanting a tree until, probably until the very last day.
And to me, it looks like they're already digging for the excavations for the buildings.
They're bringing a lot of sewer, a lot of, a lot of the wastewater retention stuff, or the stormwater retention stuff. I also spoke to Ashley, uh, and Justin from AKRF, the professional consultants that were hired to review one twenty-six main. They review, I, I don't, they had not yet, luckily that was a condition of our approval, they had not actually yet reviewed these peak flow rates that, for one twenty-six that, um, that Glenn had thought they had reviewed, so, and said they thought them to be somewhat deficient, a little bit low. And so they asked if we have, you know, any standards that we manage to, or somebody to review. I said, we do not, I said, hold them to just whatever the industry standard is to manage the, you know, manage their storm water. So they did that, and we had a conversation today about that basically the way, the way New York State works is that an existing condition is a five-year lookback. So he said that really it will greatly improve the existing condition. I had said, well, can we not talk about an existing condition that would then be removed? He said, New York State allows you to look back five years. Right, so you can take something away, but if it was there in the last five years, that's the existing condition. So how much rain runs off of a forest floor is one number, then half of it's house, and then how much, you know, the, obviously you have more runoff. So, 'cause I said, you know, we have, obviously there's a lot of municipalities, we, we're dealing with, you know, I and I, you know, the inflow infiltration of the sewer that, you know, that just overwhelms, you know, so taking stormwater is a, is a big deal. So, um, they think it's fine. They think it's better than fine, and obviously, it obviously improves it, because there's the, the, um, the grid that supports the gravel, keeps the gravel from getting compacted at all, that then, so, so we're going from compacted gravel, um, and also not going with, you know, full concrete from front to back. So they think we'll be in good shape.
Yeah.
Correspondence, nothing. New business? Uh, we have no new business. Uh, we'll have to wait for the minutes, 'cause we're gonna need... I'm gonna wait. Shoot it, David, no, we can't do the minutes. Actually, I'll have to make a copy now. It just, actually, I squeeze out and make a copy of these.
Do you wanna call James? Cause he was bringing the big one.
How many copies do you want, Matt?
Uh, just, uh, three copies, please. Thank you.
He thinks it, has it always been seven, maybe? You haven't changed your, you haven't changed your start time?
The other boards don't need this early, but...
I would think he would know.
Yeah, he knows, he knows how to count, because he definitely does.
Oh, one story I heard over lunch today, um, somebody asked a random question, and then, uh, actually, my daughter said their, their old camp managed to save a tree a few years ago, is they had a huge birch tree. And, uh, it, it's the biggest ever, and everybody loved it, but one year it wasn't doing well, and so on. So finally, they said it's gonna be removed. But then they got somebody coming, look at the tree, and then they said it's savable. What they did was they dug a trench around it and exposed.
To aerate the roots?
Yeah, big, heavy roots, and then they nailed it down and injected congealed cow blood.
Oh, for nitrogen?
Nitrogen.
And that tree survived, it's still there.
Wow.
Oh, I'm sorry, not you.
So it's, it's what my daughter said today, it was really interesting, but anyway, it's over.
Yeah, just to get a nice, for the user.
Yeah, I used to put nitrogen on, cow blood on our garden, but it would attract every dog and skunk in the neighborhood.
Well, that's interesting.
Move through the minutes.
Good to know.
It's just what she said today.
I think everybody knows as well that Nine Morris Avenue, we, um, removed their application?
Yeah, I saw that in, in, in the news, um...
They decided not to go forward.
I'm sure Aaron was relieved.
I think the applicant is not Jonathan Rose. Did, did we, did they say that?
It was nine, it was the corporate, so it is, um...
Low Stand, the Low Stand Foundation?
No, Nine Morris Avenue LLC, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Which was set up by the Rose, whatever the company name that Jonathan said.
The Low Stand Foundation, yeah. Let's just cross out Jonathan Rose, we'll just say it's Trevor Lawrence. I think I noticed that it's not need the code. In bullet point one of the board comment, I'm just gonna add, um, therefore, a, an informal review was requested, as to why we're talking about something with no previous. Was requested by CDA.
These are very thorough minutes, thank you.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of details, yeah.
I can scribble less if you like.
Yeah, that's very good.
No, no, it's actually really helpful when you go, have, like, this week we had a question, and, you know, I was, it helps to have minutes to go back to.
Also, I'm catching up, and after tonight, all of the planning board minutes are up on the village YouTube website, so if you wanna relive.
For the links?
I'd rather not watch them.
Well, if you're looking for a specific something.
No, those are, I love those, since I would, I, I often was sending clips to the applicant. I thought we had res, we had resolved that the planning board does have, does have to approve site plan. We were talking about it being vague at first, and then John finally landed on that the planning board has to approve the site plan.
For which?
It's the, the board trauma. For, for your, for, for Seven Marion?
Oh, yes. No, you always knew that.
Well...
I mean, that's the only reason we were, we...
Hello?
Find a chair.
I will.
And there's a spot for you.
Okay, um...
No, it's the whole reason we're here, is you have to approve the site plan.
All right, so I'll just, I'll work on that a little bit. Okay, the Copper Beach Street is just quarterly, we'll just change it to quarterly reports. Yeah, and the fencing, I'll give you some notes on that as well.
Were they quarterly reports or by monthly?
It's actually not quarterly, it's every other month, yeah. Okay. Kevin Bosh, should you approve the minutes as amended?
I move the approval minutes as amended.
The eight minutes, a second?
Second.
On paper? Aye. Okay, very good. All right, so we'll, um, do those. Uh, let's see. So, I guess let's wait, I might as well wait for second at this point. Oh, oh, we're waiting for James, too?
He was gonna bring a bigger printout.
Well, I have a question, is if, you know, at the end of Marion and Eddie and Campbell, this, this whole field where people dump trees and...
Yeah, that belongs to the village.
So, is there any plan for that thing? Because we can see erosion on the side of Campbell.
It's pretty bad.
It just really is bad. And, uh, you know, first as I saw it.
It's actually dangerous, if, for the people standing up on Benedict, they don't know that it's, it's actually eroded under.
Yeah, it, it just, you know, from the top you can see just, uh, tree branches, but actually it's, it's empty in the bottom.
You should probably mention it to the highway people.
Okay, so that's not, uh, the village things, or who, who is in charge of that thing?
The highway department.
Highway department?
I would serve as a village clerk, just ask the village clerk who you talk to.
Okay, because that, that looks really bad.
It does, yeah.
All right, um, move on to old business. Uh, Steven and Judith Rose, Seven Marion Avenue, uh, text map four dot one.
Is it seventh or ninth?
Two, I'm sorry, what?
We're seven.
Does it say on the, on the minute says nine?
No.
Nope, seven.
Oh, that's Morris, okay, sorry, yeah, okay.
Nope.
Good to be careful.
For construction of a new seven hundred square foot accessory structure to be used as an art studio, the studio would have fronted on Campbell Ave with no curb cut for vehicular access. That's correct, right?
No curb cut, no curb, but no vehicular access, no parking.
So that's a yes. Subject property, right? Studio would have fronted on Campbell with no curb cut for vehicular access, right? Right. Subject properties as historic districts and referred to the historic view board, let's code it in the planning board for site plan approval per one thirty-four dash seven. So, we saw the project last week, um, James is going to, is expected at some point. Did people have a chance to do their review? We had talked about, uh, kind of wanting to do a review. I mean, I had gone through, um, the village code, because prior boards had, you know, had been very nervous about power and about, and, um, and then I discussed it with the village attorney, you know, and I said, we really can't be overreaching and making decisions based on people not complying with the code. So I think what we'll do is we, we can put notes on the site plan to basically say this is not an occupied structure, this is not, um, you know, and it will, we would put all those notes on the plan.
So I am interested just in, just to confirm that with respect to the toilet and the, is it, you said there's a, there will be a...
Slap sink.
A toilet and a sink, and will the toilet be plumbed to the sewer line?
Oh, yeah.
And where will that be connected?
Well, we'll have to make a connection to Campbell.
Okay, all righty. And so, in your discussion with John, did he opine on whether or not that is a trigger for, um, like a, a kind of a residence qualification?
It's not.
Okay, and electric will be cabled in from Campbell also?
We wanna go underground, there, there is a pole there at the corner of the property on Campbell.
Okay, so there will be a separate meter?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, we won't go through the house at all, it'll all come from Campbell.
It'll be separate, right, right. And so, and again, there's no, that's no, that's not a trigger for any kind of a, um, a residency?
Well, but again, it's back to the gating issue, which is, what is, what is the applicant saying the structure is, right? They're saying that it's a, that it's accessory structure to the main building, right, for a, for, for a singular purpose, and that it needs these things, and there's nothing in the code that says, you know, I mean, I know there's always worry about this, and I know prior boards have been very clear on that, about not putting power in, not sewer in, 'cause it made them nervous, but you can't really, you can't make decisions based on, you know,
Yeah, no, I just wanted to be...
On people.
There's nothing in the code I want.
Yeah, one second, yeah, on not complying with the code.
Right, right.
Right?
Yeah.
So, but I think we should be very clear on the site plan to say that this is an accessory use structure that is not to be occupied. Another thing that has to kind of be nailed down is that it's not a commercial structure in any way, that while, that while you're gonna produce things in there, nobody's coming in to look at it there, nobody's buying it out of there. It, it kind of, it kind of hedges, it kind of straddles a gray line, whereas it is a production, right, you know, is it producing things to be sold? Right, but you know, I mean, it, it, I think that, um, a, as long as there's not traffic, um, and it's not really a commercial facility that's producing things, and that people are coming in to buy, which I think would also need to be a note on the site plan, as well as on the resolution, to basically say that it's the studio to, you know, to, to, to use, where there is no public interaction, where there's no, um, and that it cannot be occupied, right? I think that's probably the safest way to deal with it, because I think that's really what the code allows. I don't, the code doesn't really kind of allow you to talk about like what-ifs and, um, you know. So I think it's kind of overreaching to say, which is what we've been doing, right, you know, all these years, and even with mine, they were very nervous when I put power in my garage, I'm like, it's, I'm not, not, I'm putting a garage without power.
Well, the reason I was asking is, is not, 'cause I was worried about its use, I was wondering if there was a trigger that, that would require us to consider it something else, if, if those were, and if, if there's no such requirement, then fine.
I mean, did you, what did you find? Did you find anything, or?
No.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's pretty, um, the only, one thing I haven't looked at, though, really quick, I didn't finish looking.
Do they have a Campbell address?
No, it's, it's part of our property.
No.
Okay, so...
Won't have an address.
Hey, James, hey.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, what, what is...
Hi, um, they're offering to, uh, to switch rooms if that fits.
You can't connect sewer and everything into your existing house.
Well, it's just, uh, it's just us.
We're here now.
That would be almost impossible to do anyway, 'cause you got that.
One, one of these, James?
You got a wall.
Yeah, I said so much today, I find this person.
Just slide forward a little.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, this, I'm sorry, it's, you know.
You know, it's a good planning board, you can just put chairs, they're fine. That's...
It's sewer, how are you gonna do, just open or?
So I don't know if, um, let's, let's, you always have board discussion?
With the Campbell, would it just be above ground with tuba or dug in?
No.
Well, they have bury, sure.
A lot of work.
Yeah, all right, let's, let's kind of focus on the board, the board discussion.
My apologies, I thought we were starting, starting at seven thirty.
Okay, um...
We're at the discussion portion.
So, had, has, so one thirty-four seventeen are the supplementary regulations to accessory buildings and garages, did folks look at that? So it's, um, an accessory building garage may be located in any required side or rear yard provided, it's a building garage should not exceed one and one-half stories, which it does not, right?
No.
Well, is that...
As far as ridge height?
The, is that about height, or is that about the existence of stories?
It's about existence of stories in my reading.
And this is all one space?
There's a storage, storage lock, but it's not an occupied one.
Such building garage should be set back ten feet from any lot line, and separated from the principal building should have any look, shall not be located less than ten feet from it, which obviously it's a massive lot. Such building garage in the aggregate should not occupy more than, all such buildings or garages in the aggregate should not occupy more than thirty percent of the area of the required rear or side yard.
That would be like your garage and your side yard.
I mean, you know, it reads like poetry, but, um, you know, I mean, like, we're certainly conforming by a long shot the, the lot area coverage.
Absolutely, yeah.
But even if you control for, um, for what would be considered the front of the, the front of the lot, it would be, it would be the, the area that is your rear yard and your side yard, they're well, it's still well within.
Okay. No accessory building shall project nearer to the street on which the principal building fronts than such principal building. So obviously it's not on the street that the house fronts on. Should topographic conditions be such that practical difficulties would be caused by this requirement, strict location, that's all frontage. Storage unlicensed vehicles is prohibited. The district structures, I don't think there's really anything in there.
So you can't park any unlicensed vehicles in there?
I don't think you can park them anywhere in the village.
There was a wreck there when we moved in.
Oh, that's right.
When I re, when I reviewed the, that section of the, the code, it appeared that this was all well within that and met any requirements, or, so...
Yep. Okay, you, I mean, I think you, we've been walked through, you wanna walk us through it quickly, James, or?
Well, I, you know, it's, uh, it's a, um, one, it's a, it's a tiny little building, it's, uh, obviously, um...
All things being relative.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's a, um, an accessory building, uh, for a non-commercial use. It's, uh, um, going to be a very low-energy building, um, a low-energy consuming building, so that, um, it's, uh, minimizing the impact on the environment, um, and, uh, tying into existing utilities. It's pretty straightforward.
Um, has the, did the HGRB collect escrow?
Escrow?
Is that him?
No, no.
Okay.
No, they just scheduled a date for the hearing.
Oh, they're ready to go to hearing?
Mm-hmm, they already have a date.
What's the date?
Last Wednesday of March.
Yeah, okay.
March or April?
April, sorry.
The only thing that I...
Twenty-five.
The only thing that I wanna talk to John about is just that it's, that it's truly not a commercial building, right, that, you know, if you're producing things for sale, right?
Right.
I mean, that's always kind of been a gray area.
Right.
Is there a, is there a distinction between commercial and retail?
We're not talking about retail, yeah, it's not talking about retail, but a commercial building could, I think, look, you can have people, you know, kind of fixing up cars in their garage and ultimately selling them, but you know, it takes a year, or two years, or whatever, 'cause it's kind of a hobby, and that could not, it's not really commercial. But if you're, but if you're constantly producing things for sale, the question is, is that, is that a commercial use, right? So I'd like to at least get John's opinion on that, just to make sure that we're, you know, that we're not, we're not setting precedent. But that would be my one concern. What do you, what do you think?
I think that's wise, and I'm, and my, and the reason I'm squinting is I'm trying to walk around the village in my head and think about where people have, where people have, uh, occupations on their home property, or in their, where they...
Yeah, well, there's, well, there's the, there's the compatibility of uses, right, which is our, is the public coming in, and is there parking, and is there deliveries, and there's all that, right? Which is not, not the case here.
Question here.
And I think, I think that's actually the most important piece, to be honest, in my mind.
Yeah.
Well, that's what that...
I just wanna make sure that if we, if we do an approval for something, we know that like a product is being produced to be sold, right, I mean, that you sell the art, right? I mean, that's the goal.
That's the, that's the theoretical.
Are people buying it, I guess?
That's the theoretical construct.
Your, your, your defense could be, nobody buys it.
That's right. It's not an art gallery, the work is, is...
Oh, no, 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 not a gallery, you're not, yeah, oh, no, no, absolutely, no, no.
No, but it's, um, you know, it's a place of, it's a, could be, you could say it's a place of manufacture.
Right, yeah, look, if you're making, if you're baking cookies and selling them, if you're baking, you know, there's some...
Or making dyes or something like that.
Well, exactly, exactly. And that's my concern, is just that, it's the exact same thing, right, 'cause basically, it's, but it does become a quantity type thing, in my mind, like, I, I, I mean, I saw a case where a guy was, you know, was just a teacher who was, you know, would restore vintage cars, but you know, fucking a year or two, so he's not really running an auto shop. He kind of has a hobby and then sells his toys, right?
Well, does it help if I tell you the IRS considers us a hobby? We don't file a, a business for Steve's painting, we, we, you know, if he sells...
Well, it's 'cause I don't make any money.
Right. It's, the IRS calls us a hobby.
All right, it'll, it'll just be a quick, just a quick opinion from John.
Non-profit, yeah.
Okay, very good. And obviously, the, it's, it's very small, it complies with, you know, I can't imagine HGRB is gonna have any issue with, because of, obviously, the neighboring structures and, uh, are already contemporary, if not modern.
It's actually smaller than your average two-car garage, I looked that up, and we...
I'm sorry, wait, how, 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 what's the size of this place, I can't...
Seven hundred square feet?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, and then.
They don't have an apartment.
And this plan that I just handed out to you, um, shows it, the adjusted, uh, sightings, so it's.
It's thirty by, thirty-three by.
Thirty-three feet wide by, um. So it's, it's twenty-one feet deep, um, plus a ten foot deck and thirty-three feet wide.
So you, you are saying it's one and a half, one and a half stories?
Bigger than many houses.
Yeah, I mean, if, in the code compliance chart, um, I think Gero's, my employee was a little overly zealous and I, I mean, I, I would say it's really a one story structure.
What, what's the height of the, uh, the roof line?
The height of the roof line.
It's taller than, it's taller than normal, but it's, but, but the, the stories loft starts very high up.
It's on, on tilt, isn't it?
It's a shed roof, so only one side is high.
Yeah.
So it's probably taken from the average grade to the ridge line, right?
Yeah. Let's see if she has height here. I'm seeing if, but. Yeah, that, I, um, I'm sorry, I don't have height in here. It's about, uh.
Height, thirty-five feet.
Height, you're thirty-five.
Yeah, it's less than thirty.
It's on the, it's on the, on one-on-one.
It's.
Thirty-five, that's, that's two and a half stories.
Thirty-five feet? Oh, no, sorry, that's the maximum.
That's the, the maximum allowed.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
Whoa, sorry about that.
Um, it's, and that's, that first, that is on the, uh, principal residential structure accessory building is the next thing down, um. So it, it, um, she listed one and a half stories height, but it, it really should say one story and, um, then the actual height, which is approximately ten feet at the, um. At the low end of the roof and, you know, add about five feet at the high end, so.
And then it's on, it's on piers?
It's on piers, yeah.
So down to the grade is another three feet?
Uh, approximately three feet, so it's about thirteen at the, uh, low end. And because of the hill, it's almost, you know, touching at the high end, so it's, you know, going to be somewhere around sixteen or so at the high end, approximately.
Are those five feet, one?
Yes, I'm adding another foot for the depth of the, the, um, down to the soil.
So eighteen, thirteen to eighteen?
Uh, thirteen to about sixteen because of the slope.
Okay, okay.
Cause the hillside.
I'm sorry, this is, the Kemble end is thirteen and this is sixteen?
Yeah. Approximately, yeah.
And then obviously since it's on piers, the, there's no, there's no real change to, um, to stormwater runoff.
Correct, we're not changing the grading at all, it's.
Right.
So, um, yeah.
And the roof's just gonna shed it onto the, onto the ground?
Correct, we have gutters and meters, but yes.
Hopefully a rain barrel.
Yeah, I'd like to collect the water.
Yeah, you might as well put a system in for the day, although you're just doing a pier, is that right? Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Um, so I, I do, I'm just, I wonder, you're gonna opine, or you're gonna ask John first to opine on the question of commercial? And whether or not that's a, that's a, an issue for use?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But I mean, we could, that could just be a condition of approval. If we, if the board wanted to move forward tonight.
Do you think that he would be answering us in a yes or no sort of a way, or would he?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I suspect he's gonna say it's not.
Mm-hmm.
I suspect he's gonna, you know, kind of chew on it, um, but I'd like to do that, cause obviously we have had that issue in the past where. And it was considered to be a code violation, right? A very, you know, hotly disputed and, you know, uh, producing, you know, artistic, you know, handmade products for sale, right? It's not a whole lot different.
Right.
Um. So I'd like at least to get the, the village attorney's opinion to say, you know, we're, that we're on, we're on the right side of that.
Okay, and will be.
Especially because it is such a, I mean, there's a lot going into it, right? I mean, there's a, you know, I mean, so, you know, it's not just kind of a, it, it's not, you know, just kind of four walls, I mean, it's being plumbed, it's powered, so, yeah.
Um, so will we, uh, will we, if we vote on this tonight, subject to John First's, um, recommendation that, you know, um, the use is not an issue. Um, will we tonight itemize the notes that we wanna see or any of the changes on, on this?
That's a good point, I'm wondering if actually, yeah, I'm wondering actually if it shouldn't.
I'm just wondering, is, is the height gonna be, Dr. Union, you've seen stuff like a pretty important element?
And, and while we were talking here, I was looking over and I actually noticed these data. So from the lowest point to the very highest point, um, we're showing it to be twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three, and twenty-three, ten, and a half.
And three sixteen.
Twenty-three from the grade?
From the lowest end to the high, high peak.
Because of the grade?
Right. So it really should be looking at average height.
I'm sorry.
From the average grade, yeah.
Average grade and average height, so, you know, that's cer- certainly overcounting it, but if we.
So twenty-three?
Twenty-three, ten.
Twenty-three, ten, sixteen.
Oh, and it's twenty-four.
Yep.
But that's, again, that's seriously overcounting it, so it's taking it from the very lowest part of the grade to the very highest part of the roof.
But isn't that like saying that a, like a peak, a ridge line is overcounted?
Well, it should be, yeah, it should be to the average height of the roof and it should be from the average grade. So it should be down the middle here, not, not a, so we're.
According to who that should be?
That's according to the code. So we're, we're taking it from this low point here.
But it's average grade to the, but it's average grades to the ridge, I mean, they're not, they're not allowing for shed roofs in it.
And it's to the average, well, it, it, it's to the average roof height, to, to the, the, the mean roof height.
And this is.
So it should be to the center of the roof, whether it's a, a slope roof or a peak roof.
But the code refers to the ridge line, right?
Right.
Where's the ridge?
Uh, wait, no, it, my, it's, the ridge is at the high end.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And it's the average, average roof height is the code reading. So it's the average grade and the average roof height, so it should be.
When it is a shed, I'm sorry?
Well, it doesn't differentiate between a shed roof.
It's any structure, yeah.
I mean, it is, you know, if we're to count that loft as a story, which is not high enough to be a story, but if we were to count that as a story, um, the, um. It, it's still considered a half story, right?
Right, right.
So like, that's, it's not like we're overbuilding, if that were already occupied.
Actually, my, my issue isn't, isn't about like, oh, and, and what the eventuality of that is. I'm just wanting to, I wanna understand for myself.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the requirement and where the, where the.
I mean, it really should be, it, it, it's taking from the low point to the high point here, and it really, it should be taking from the mid-point on the, on the.
The height.
But, but even at the extreme end, you're eleven feet lower than the extreme on the code.
It's still conforming. Correct.
No, but that's two and a half stories, you're not allowed to have a two and a half story.
You can have thirty-five feet.
You can have, no, not on a one and a half, there, the one thirty-four seven restricts, restricts it to one and a half stories. Thirty-five feet is a two and a half story building.
Um, yeah, according to our research, it actually doesn't say what the, the height is, but maybe we need to look at that carefully, but.
I'm sure what the height of one is.
The maximum height of the structure.
Here it is, right here, the vertical distance measured from the average elevation of the finished grade around the perimeter building with not less than one measurement each side of the building to the highest point of the roof.
Highest point.
The highest point.
Well.
The mean height between eaves and ridge for gable, hip and gambrel roofs, so it's, it's the highest point of the roof.
Okay, so the highest point from the average, so.
From the average grade.
Average grade, yeah.
Yeah.
Which, and we took it from the lower end of the, the grade, so we're, you know, the difference in grade, let's say it's four feet. So it's like twenty-one feet to the, um, to the, from the average grade to the highest peak.
What is, I don't even know if this is defined in the code, but what's the height of a one and a half story building? If a two and a half is thirty-five, you did up nine feet?
Yeah, about nine feet, I mean, habitable spaces, it's where code and state code and.
What the, what is the habitable height, what, what, what's the requirement?
Seven feet is the minimum for, for habitable space.
Inter, interior, and then you have to gross that off, right?
Yeah. Yeah, then you have the floor depth and then the roof depth. So nine, nine is approximately a good number.
So that would be like nine?
At least nine, yeah, you would take at least nine because of, because of the framing.
Yeah. Right.
So you can.
But you'd still have a roof framing, the roof frame anyway, so it's just reducing.
And if you're, and, and a half story is, has, the half story would be half of that? I mean, is that what, that would be, it's gonna be like four and a half?
Half stories, it's, half stories still gonna have the same height in the center, but obviously the, as the eaves come down, only fif, less than fifty percent can be, can be traversed. You know, can actually be walked through.
There's also a height requirement, like an average height requirement, and, and that's where state code, which is really the, the law of the land, differentiates.
Well, but in this.
Well, let's say the village code differentiates, differs from the state code and really the state code definition of what is a habitable space. You know, the, really, the village code needs to, to align to that, cause that's, that's really the basis of this law.
Right. Right. Right, but that's not implied here.
Yeah.
And so the, so that means that for, if it's, there, if it is considered a one and a half story structure, it has to meet a certain minimum.
Right, to be considered habitable.
Well, really to count the half store, I mean, you can't, you're not, it isn't, it's a loft, we're basically talking about ridge line.
Right.
Okay, so it isn't, it isn't a question of story.
Right, to the highest point of the roof. There's no question of, of, no, no, my only question of story is, I don't know actually what the, what the maximum height for a one and a half story is.
Right.
Do you?
Well, if it's a habitable space with, with the framing and everything, it's roughly nominally nine feet.
Right.
Then you take that from the thirty-five, that leaves you with twenty-six.
Right.
If you're at twenty-four, ten, then you're under that.
Right.
That's what I, that's what I would think, that's what I was saying, it's nine feet, yeah. You take thirty-five minus nine.
Right.
Yeah.
But that is only, so I just want, but that is only allowable if it's a resident, if it's going to be an occupied.
No, 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 it's, no, this is accessories buildings.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, and really, like, the height of that lot.
The one thirty-four seven, the one thirty-four seventeen amendment, which is not that old, you kind of looked at these accessory, it was trying, it was kind of further narrowing down these accessory structures in the.
Exclusive of, exclusive of residential.
They're not, it's only about accessory structures.
Alright, so be that as that may. We'll, we'll have the site plan, will be updated, so it's, are, are, are you saying the.
The information's in this.
This is accurate, oh, okay, alright.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great.
So ju- just for definition sake, you know, the half, half story doesn't mean that it's, you know, instead of an eight foot high ceiling, it's a four foot high ceiling, but.
Right, I got, yeah, I got that.
Right, it's a, the, you know, that half, it's, the occupiable area is half of the floor below it, and that's what they're, sorry.
How far is this way, not this way?
Right.
So the, the two and a half that you have as far as the code on your plan should really say one and a half, is that correct?
Um. No, that, well, that, the first half of our zoning conformance chart is about the residential structure.
Right. Okay.
So the second half accessory building, then we talk about the half, one, one and a half story building.
And so, is this something that would, is this something that is publicly heard?
Um, we're only required under code to have a public hearing for a change of use.
Okay.
It's not a change of use. Um, we, it's our discretion to hold a hearing, I don't, I would say we don't really need a hearing because of the, HGRB will do a public hearing.
HGRB's.
And I think really the most impactful things are just the, you know, the, you know, the, the, the change to the, you know, to the view shed and the fact that, you know, the building doesn't exist there. Um, and it will, but obviously they're not doing a curb cut, they're not doing parking, so it's pretty, you know, it's, um, but, you know, who knows? residents come out and they talk and.
Yeah, there's, I think it's also important to note that, um, from the Kemble Avenue side, um, uh, we're, there's a sliding barn door, which will actually be, um. Basically, um, uh, like a blackout kind of curtain, as well as the, the, the lights are dark sky compliant, so the impact will be almost invisible at night. So, um, they're, you know, not that dark sky is written into the code very clearly or, you know, um, with a lot of emphasis, but, you know, the, the visual impact of this at night will be invisible. So I think that's just worth being aware of.
People have problems looking at this at night?
No, it's just that, uh, you know, as far as, I, I do thi, you know, I do think, you know, as far as, um. Preserving view sheds and things, you know, like not creating light pollution is important. And, and, um, we've together done a lot to address that.
I don't like, we'll see if Stephen walking back up the house with his flashlight.
With my flashlight. Exactly.
And it's great, it's so green, the building, so energy efficient, which is what, that's in the master plan or?
It's actually in the code.
Code.
No, the code, there's actually a section in the code that said, says encourage green building.
Oh, in the comp plan?
No, in the code, there's actually a, a paragraph.
Oh, right, that meant.
I thought they didn't go into colors.
Well, I thought that you were saying that, cause he picked out the colors to match the hillside.
Okay, what else we got? So, nothing, you good?
It's not, I'm good with this, I'm just looking at the, the, the plan. So it's from this, from the side of the road to the, to the edge of the studio, how far it is and so on, that's what I'm looking at. Otherwise, I have, I have no problem with the, with the building itself, cause that, that part needs something, I think. It's, it's nice to, to have, it, it's just, uh, uh, you know, if you got a green building, it, it's not very high to block their own building. And then, uh, if you dig the new sewer line to connect into the Kemble thing there, and the power line, the pole is right there, so assume the meter.
I wanna bury that, I wanna bury that line too.
And like our site is, everything is buried.
Yeah.
But the, the thing is on the side, it's all exposed, so the Casperian's tree fell down and knocked the whole thing up. We were, we were out for forty hours without power, the Casperian's tree did. So those are the things that's very, um, very obviously that we need, but, you know, whatever we can do to, to try to prevent the power outage, the, this and that. That's, that's what I'm looking at. The other thing is the water.
We can't help there, that's how, that's how this board does.
Yeah, that's, that's something. Yeah, no, but the other thing is the water, as, as long, because as they said, there is nothing blocking the water coming downhill, so, you know, it's, that's.
But there's no change here, cause it sits in piers.
No, but, yeah, that's, that's.
So I mean, yeah, that would be, you know, that would be an issue.
Yeah, but, but these days, one thing, um, I think we should keep in mind is the, the, the environmental changes these days, uh, the climate changes. There's so much water, uh, and so, you know, one thing we actually is, in collecting water, the other thing is just make sure that it's not somewhere in the main path. Water that goes through that damaged building. And that's, that's one thing we should look at, because the water really is just getting so much, it's coming down from the hill there. And that's, that's one thing, just make sure that the water doesn't rush onto the building, whatever we can diverse. That's, you know, it's not our job to.
It's on, it's on piers and eye beams here, so.
Yeah. Well, there are a lot of things, we don't know what's going on these days.
They have to be pretty high.
Yeah, but, but that's.
Tsunamis.
I, I have no objection to the, in here, yeah. So Joe would have no problem with it, Joe, um, the blue house.
The yellow?
Joe, yeah.
Well, they'll have, they'll have a public hearing, actually, the planning board will, the HGRB will have a public hearing to get input from the public, cause they'll, uh, you guys have already begun in the blast zone?
H, H, yeah, they'll, yeah.
Obviously you have a few, the neighbors that you need to notify.
We have. Well, I have to, I, I still have to do that, is there, is there like a template for that?
Um, I, I've written letters in the past, I can.
Okay.
No, it should, it should be the notice, the notice that's going in the paper needs to be mailed out.
Oh, that's right. That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll help you with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Design it so, so people will say, oh, yeah, nice.
Was notes written?
They should have written it.
Okay.
I forgot that, that's right, that's.
And they gave you the blast zone, right, the, like, who's getting it?
Uh, I don't know, I mean, it's, things have gotten a lot more confusing since we've switched methodologies here, um, not sure, I think Jeff is the one who, it's, do you know?
No.
No?
The announcement, you mean the?
No, no, the, the blast zone, but.
No, 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 the board decides that.
No, no, the board will.
Okay.
Like, we don't, there are some boards where it's written into the code, like it's adjacent, across, and, you know, category or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
O- ours isn't written in, we, we pick it, and, we pick it ca- on a case-by-case basis. So like, we would do, you know, I would probably do, you know, two on either side, and then across, obviously at Marion, or Marathon cross.
But HTRB, the HTRB is adjacent properties.
The what?
For the HTRB hearing, those notices are prescribed.
There's, I think it's written into there, yeah, I think there's, yeah, I, that's a thought, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make sure, I'll, I'll follow up with Kathleen and see.
So you should be able to actually look in the code in chapter sixty-four and just figure it out, I think it's just, I think it's just to touch it.
Yeah.
But, but what about, so not Marathon?
Um, no, no, across, across the street, so it would be Mar- it would be, yeah, it would be.
Across the street as well, yeah.
There is nobody across the street.
Marathon, it would be the owners of Marathon, it would be the owners of the folks on the corner of Campbell and thing. It would be BFW, it would be the LLO, right, it would be Link.
Okay.
What about people on Marion?
It would be ne- your next-door neighbor.
On Marion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you go to Marion, who, well, the Minkies and, and Joe's house, those are the two immediate neighbor, otherwise it would be yourself.
It's not, it's the property.
The whole property goes up to Marion, yeah. You know, our prop, this is, this is all part of, our, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, the code will guide you.
They really should, they should do both, they should do both frontages though.
The.
I don't, I, I don't know if they will.
It may say in the, in the code.
It may not anticipate a situation like this, because it's so unusual, yeah.
I'm just saying, I, yeah, the code will guide you.
But I guess if it's, yeah, so when you look at, actually, James, when you look at the code.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would take the interpretation that it's, that it's the Campbell, that's Campbell as well, because it, it's all the better that those, those folks get a notice, and they're, you know, they don't, they don't raise issues later.
Yeah.
Um, there's the blue house to the left, because there's only one house between you and the BFW, right, between this and that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so you.
It's adjacent, it's the adjacent property owners, including those across the street from your parcel, it's not about, it's not like about the building.
No, but the parcels, don't forget the parcels up on Marion Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I, my point is this, yeah, you'd have to get.
Like, they don't go through, like, the people down on Campbell don't go through to Marion. That little house, that little blue house?
The little blue house.
On Campbell.
In the corner, that's Joe's, yeah, that's Joe's.
But that's adjacent.
Yeah.
Because of the lot line?
Hmm.
But it's right next to.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm not sure if they would interpret it that way, but I would, I would interpret it that way, to just say if anything touches it all the way around.
Hmm.
You know, not just, not just the frontage side.
Right.
You know?
I'm only, yeah.
Doesn't hurt to get fifteen minutes straight.
Something like how I had read it when I had applied for my own, like when I did the porch, I, my neighbors in the back had to be notified, yeah.
Yeah.
Across the street, in the, um, constitution, the boulevard.
Yeah.
I, I just reached out to Kathleen.
The, the whole brownish house right there.
Look it up. Okay.
All right, to it.
Yeah.
Good.
Uh, what are going to do, are we, are people comfortable going forward?
Yeah, might as well vote pending on what John says.
Okay. With, just, the only, uh, the only understand that we want is just the non-commercial use?
Hmm.
Okay. Um, and I think we're comfortable with the ridge height, because obviously I think that, like, nine foot is a, is a reasonable deduction.
Hmm.
Dave agrees, so must be right.
Yeah, no, I don't know about that.
Uh, well, it's certainly reasonable.
Yeah, I would agree with that, um, do we, if we vote now, do we have to identify the notes?
Oh, good point.
On the site plan?
Yeah, I mean, I think, so I think what would be important, either on the site, probably on the site plan as well, just that, that, a few things, just that the, so obviously, one of them will be the opinion, property for a non-commercial use, right? I mean, it, the concern also would be short-term rentals, right? You know, that you have a, you have a bathroom, and it doesn't take that much to then put in a shower and a kitchenette, and, you know.
We'd have to get a building permit for that.
Understood, yeah, understood, but a lot of people don't, so that's what I'm saying, just for the site plan, just put a note on the site plan to basically say that it's, that it's not an occupied structure, so everybody's clear.
Hmm.
Um.
So that it's in the record so that people aren't applying for a, a change such as that, that somebody may approve because they didn't think of it that way.
Yeah.
Is it, and it would be sufficient simply to say that this is not an occupied structure? Or do we need to go into great detail, it seems like?
Probably what we ought, we probably ought to actually just ask John to write this, maybe what we ought to do is just, because we'll meet again before your public hearing, right?
Yes, we will.
Hmm.
They're, they're here in the end of April, so that's really a whole bunch of time in between.
Oh, end of April?
Yeah.
Oh, 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 okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I said March, yeah.
Yeah, so why don't we do that, why don't we, um, we should probably collect escrow and just ask John to just do.
What, what's the escrow for?
John, hey, John. Um, and, but you know, yeah, for a site plan review, uh, it's in the code that you collect a thousand dollars of escrow. Um, it's not gonna take much time, but I think we should ask him, just what, what's that?
Hmm, yeah, sorry.
Just what, what the language should be, just to, just to make sure that we're, that we're clear, that we're approving an accessory structure. You know, especially when something's plumbed and, and heated and.
I, I think it, it's not a residential structure.
Right.
Yeah, I think.
The terminology that you want.
Yeah, because if you say occupied, then it gets, you know, it's a studio, so it's gonna be occupied.
Yeah, occupied doesn't work.
It's in the accessories. It's accessories.
Yeah, well, it's, but not occupy for a residential use, right? You can occupy a building, but not in a residential, not for residential use. That's what I'm saying, let's just ask him what the language is, that's what.
And I want to clarify, it is March twenty-eighth that you have.
March.
That HTRB.
Not, not.
No, I think they, they put it off till.
He just said April, I was just.
They put it off till the end of April.
Oh, okay, I had it down as a twenty-eighth, so.
But, I mean, I, that, isn't that next week? Yeah, that won't be next week, Kathleen, it will be, it's something spring break.
As I understood, they, they had to put it off till the end of April.
That's right. Because of her, yeah.
Because of spring, so it's her spring break.
Okay, so this is correct, twenty-five, April.
Twenty-five.
That's good, because he wouldn't be able to get all those letters out by next week.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it'd be too short, yeah.
Because you got three days.
Okay, crisis averted.
So you're pulling, you're knocking out for a motion at this meeting?
We're deliberating about that right now.
Yeah, we're still deliberating, yeah, I think we ought, I think.
I just got lost.
I think we're, it's not gonna take John more than like an, an hour to do this, maybe less.
So, so let's hear from, from John, and then about what he recommends, and can we ask him specifically about, um, about construction wording into the, constructing the resolution?
Yeah.
Not that he, yeah, you know, maybe he should even, should he write it, we should have him write it?
Yeah, 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 oh, no, absolutely, I always have him write the resolutions.
Oh, okay, good.
No, 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 not the binding stuff. Um, and it's not gonna take him any time at all, uh, but I think we should, especially with, with the, the current dynamic of short-term rentals too. And I, obviously, that's not what you're doing, but obviously the house could be sold, and it'd be very easy for somebody to convert it to, and to just say, listen, it's plumbed, it's, you know, they clearly has an intended use, right? We want to make sure that that intended use is clear on the site plan, that it's not, that that's not the intended use, um, especially with the proliferation of Airbnbs and.
Now, right now, um, right now, there's no intention of, like, pulling in off Campbell, or there's no curb to cut, but you're not gonna be, there's no tra- no anticipated vehicular traffic, um, and I'm just thinking, do, do you want to make note of that also on the?
It's on the site plan that they're not doing it, um, it, doing a curb cut, you have to come before the planning board.
Okay, if there is no curb to cut, must you come before the planning board?
I don't, I don't think it physically requires the cutting of the curb, you're basically, the highway department has to kind of talk about, okay, there's gonna be an entrance. What's the safe, what's the safest point for that ingress and egress?
Right, okay.
So you have to come back and get a full site plan review, to say you're gonna have, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna change traffic, because you changed traffic law.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and is there an address on Campbell for this lot, for the back of this lot, yeah, okay.
Well, basically, there, it's an attachment or addition to their Marion house, it's not a, so there is no address on Campbell.
Oh, no, I know what, I, I get what that is, I'm just wondering if.
If we subdivided, we'd get an address.
Yeah.
Well, it's, um.
Yeah, from Joe's house to our house, Joe's is thirty-something, ours is already forty-six, so there's like ten numbers in between, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do a subdivision.
Ten months.
Let's do it.
All right, anything else? So we'll do that, so if you want to drop off escrow with the clerk, um.
Don't you just, what's the financial risk here?
Financial risk, oh, what's the, oh, the cost? I don't imagine it's gonna take him even an hour, to be honest, I mean, he's just basically gonna, um.
But you want a thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's what's written into our code, is for a site plan review, um, and approval, it's a thousand-dollar escrow, which is to collect on everyone, which we actually have been very good on, I just didn't do it on this one, not, not because it's a board member, because I thought we wouldn't actually need, um, need anything. Uh, but we have, I have collected it on all but one application, the one on was Thirty-Five Market, because we knew we were not really doing anything with them. Um, and then we'll have John just do this, and then John can write the resolution, because we're not even gonna write a resolution, um, even for Thirty-Five Market, because it's basically just, we're just basically filing a site plan. Um, but it's good to get those site plans on files, like with Thirty-Five Market, same thing, which is, okay, now the parking is over here, this is actually not an occupied structure anymore, so again, it helps with things like Airbnb, and you know, it's just like, you know, the, you know, the approval was that it was, this is now a garage, not a, you know, not a carriage house, and so that's, we, it's, it's best for the village to have all this stuff in the file, right? That everybody understood what was approved, so there's no question going forward, and it's the same thing here, that your use, and obviously, we trust you, that this is your use. But obviously, the project, the property could change hands, you, or your circumstances could change, you know, you rent out the house, right? And then somebody starts renting out the, you know, there's a cottage, because it doesn't take a lot to really, to modify, and people would be happy to say, seven hundred square meters space and trees, you know, the pressure field and walk to the train, and, you know, so, you know.
You want to move there?
So say, you, you may be able to, you may be able to, to subdivide, sell it as a tiny house.
It's already sold.
Not this week.
Tiny house living.
You just helped sell.
Talk to us in ten years.
Watch the deer feed on the cadmium.
Yeah. So true.
We're breathing it all the time.
The glow, the glowing deer. All right?
Okay.
But I don't think they'll be, I think everything's fine, I mean, I think it's fine, I think it's just, I just want to make sure that, because, I mean, you, I mean, Judith certainly knows me, is I'm never, like, looking like here and typically like five, ten years down the road, because it's, because that's really the way you, you know, you kind of, uh, avoid setting precedent, and that you, that people kind of understand what these structures are. It is not the right way to do it, just not approve them and not allow people to pound in buildings, it's just, that's, you know, you can't, I, I think that the, the hard decision was kind of overreaching. Um, but I think notes on the plan and writing the resolution in a certain way is, is, is what should be done, and the people should be allowed to proceed, and you assume that they're gonna follow the code. Right, not making decisions that you don't believe they're gonna follow the code, and restricting on areas that you don't really have the right to restrict, you don't. I mean, you're allowed to put power in a toilet, you know, obviously, you don't want to walk back up to the house to go to the bathroom, we prefer you not going outside proper, so.
Thank you, Matt, I do understand that.
We'll deter deer.
So, uh, so I think that, uh, I think it all works.
So you're holding off on the vote then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't see any, I don't, I personally don't see any issue, obviously, uh, nothing's, is guaranteed, the board, the board will vote, but I don't. Um, I don't see any issue at all, it's basically just getting the right language on the, on the resolution, um, like I said, really with my choice precedent. So in that, I think the ridge height's fine, and I think that it's completely reasonable, take thirty-five, take nine off, say twenty-six, you're below twenty-six, so it's roughly a story and a half. Let's.
Thank you.
Yeah, and James said it's closer to twenty-one or something, actually.
And you want, yeah, you're below it anyway, so I mean, it's, I think that's fine, okay.
Cool.
Anything else, any public comment?
Question about the, the copper birch?
Copper peach, yeah.
Peach?
At Butterfield?
Did they determine what caused the, the tree to, to die? Was it the digging around, because I see, you know, they had dug out so much soil there?
We don't have a, we don't have Quincy, is it Quincy was the corner, was the corner?
Yeah, Quincy.
Uh, I'm showing my age, uh, CSI, I guess we should say, um, but.
Well, there were arborists in there, correct?
The arborists were in there, yeah, there, 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 there seemed to be a little bit of misunderstanding as to when certain protections were triggered. Um, the arborist came in, uh, from Savatory, that did an evaluation of the tree, the tree had, um, some rot, but, you know, it, it was considered to be a relatively healthy tree. You'll hear different versions of that, but no different than as us, as we age, you're not a hundred percent healthy, that doesn't mean you're ready to be put in a box. Uh, you know, it's just, you're just getting older, and so it's like, okay, you know, yeah, so there's rot, it's not like the rest of you are rotted, right? You know, so, maybe you got a little bit of limp, so the tree was, was an old tree, it's a seventy-year-old tree at least. Um, it, there was drought, which the arborist, which their arborist, um, spoke of, unfortunately, had it had been clear that all these protections were supposed to be done immediately, um, it mu- the outcome might have been different, but there's no guarantee, because it's an old tree. And they don't like this kind of disruption, I mean, you dig all the way around it, you're cutting major roots, trees, you know, they look for water, they find water. You don't really know when you do things around them, whether or not it's a, it's a critical root, it's not a critical root, they all kind of look the same. Um, and that's where it's finding water, the tree wasn't watered, um, during the drought that we had last fall, um, and there were, there were protections that, there was a mi- I thi- I think as ultimately, there was a misunderstanding or misinterpretation of when all these protections are starting, and I think that they thought that it was just, you know, they could put the fence up and then do all the, a lot of these treatments, they did plenty of treatments, the, you know, the, the owner of the property was, you know, was fertilizing, was doing certain things, um, but not all of them. So, the, long story short, it, 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 it's an older tree that was stressed, right, from just the work that went around it. Whether or not some of these, you know, some of these treatments would have worked, you know, is, we, we're not gonna know. Um, watering it would have been very helpful, because the tree's, you know, at risk, because just like at a garden center, you gotta keep the root ball wet. You know, a tree's been sitting there for seventy years, you don't need to water it, it'll find water, it'll be fine until it does. Um, but, you know, it had already been excavated around, I think the misunderstanding was, there was two triggers, there was prior to any excavation, and then there was excavation within the critical root zone, like when you start to get really close to the tree. So, I think there was just kind of a misunderstanding, but the bill, the village frankly bears some of that as well, because we probably should have been checking in code enforcement to say, hey, show me these reports, how's it going, wait a minute, why aren't you, you know, why aren't you mulching the tree, why aren't you watering the tree? The, their interpretation of it, which is reasonable, was that that came when you really were excavating right next to the tree. Not when you're elsewhere, but the tree obviously is feeling the impact of all that compression of soil, um, and it just, it changes things, you know, and so.
Well, you said there's, there was a misunderstanding between, what, the owner or the people, the arborists who were taking care of the tree? Who was the misunderstanding between?
Both, because the, uh, the arborist taking care of the tree is not the village arborist, it's the owner's arborist. But what I'm saying is that it would have been best, in hindsight, it's always twenty-twenty, to be fair, it's not a criticism, it's just that the village kind of checked in on this tree protection plan and said, hey, show me your reports, what are you doing? Then the two arborists would have talked, um, but the village doesn't have an arborist, unfortunately, so I mean, uh, and in order to have a budget, to kind of have an arborist check in on trees. But I guess code enforcement could have at least said, you know, there's these every other month reports, can we see the reports, are you doing, you know, are you treating the tree? And at some point, it, somebody might have figured out that it was, um, that there was more they could be doing, right? And it was probably that, and so I think that, um.
So the village has a code enforcement, so after it was decided that this tree had to be saved, or, you know, kept and, and treated a certain way, so somebody from the village is responsible for following up on that, code enforcement, is that how it works?
It, well, it, it, I would tell you we've never had anything like this.
So will there be something in the future, say, one of these, Saint Mary's?
I think now. Well, yeah, no, I think now, I think now that there is a tree committee, this predated the tree committee, right?
Hmm, well, uh, they, they actually kind of coincided, but the, this tree, this tree would not have been within the purview of the tree committee, because the tree committee is only, uh, only focused on public, village, village tree, so this is a private tree, I mean, it's of, of public interest, but, uh, certainly, but it's, it's owned by.
It would be a, but at the time, was it a, a private tree?
Yeah.
It's always a private tree, it only become, it only comes into the public arena and discussion, because it was a, it, well, yeah, because it was part of the approvals, it's a, it's a valued aesthetic resource of the village, the village loves the tree, they love seeing the tree, um, and so it was part of the approvals, it was a condition of approval. And then part of that condition was, with the best of intentions, including the developer, with the best of intentions was to save the tree, right? And so an arborist was brought in to come up with a plan to do that. And there's no, there is absolutely no guarantee that if you followed that plan to the letter, the tree would have made it. Trees do not like that kind of disruption, and it's a lot of disruption, um, you know, it's, it's going on many years, as opposed to, it's, you know, the quicker you do it, the quicker you get the dirt back, the quicker the tree has time to send out new roots, um, but that hasn't happened, right, because it's been disturbed, but left. So, um, yeah, so unfortunately, like I said, we don't really, this is kind of a first for the village, I think, where a private tree was part of a site plan, and, you know, so it's just, but it was a special tree, right, and that's obviously why everybody.
So nothing can be done to save it, like you had suggested before, with?
Well, we had two, we had two arborists, the village had two arborists, look at it, who thought it was beyond, you know, really kind of healthy growth, the tree's not dead. But it's not going to, it's not going to flourish, it's not gonna fully leaf out, it's not gonna, you know, um, and it's gonna struggle, and then, I will tell you, when it gets built, it's, it's really kind of, it's right in the crux of a building. If the residential buildings actually get built on Paulding, it is, it's actually, might be a third of one of the yards. You know, that's what the easement is about, to not trim that canopy, because if a tree comes into your yard, you're allowed to, you're allowed to trim it back, um, but there's an easement that you can't trim it back, that, that was recorded.
And to the west of it, there's a, there's gonna be a large underground parking location, so the.
So it's deep excavation, yeah.
So there's deep excavation, and then, and.
Instead of going down eight to nine feet, they're going down thirteen to fourteen feet, you know, so it's, because you're, you're gonna park underneath the, the structure, so it's.
So after digging, the roots will be blocked, migrating in that direction, you know, because there'll be a wall. So, the, I mean, the, the site plan, the site plan isn't, isn't a plan that is about tree preservation, you know, the site plan is.
Yeah, and I think, I think we would do things differently, I mean, I would certainly suggest that code enforcement be aware of that plan, and would pull it, and just kind of, you know, you do, it's just language, I mean, it's not like you need to be an arborist to read it, um, but unfortunately, the village doesn't have an arborist, so it's hard to kind of, you know, we, we actually brought in an arborist, then brought in the, what, Save-A-Tree back, and they, they all agreed that the tree's beyond healthy growth. Um, and that it could be a risk, because it just, large limbs continue to die back, it's lost a lot of bark. So it's unfortunate.
At it, it was, I think it was getting ready to blow out all those little buds.
Yeah, well, yeah, it will, it will leave, it's not that, it's not dead, by any means, it's not dead, you know. But, um, you know, it's, but again, you know, independent, all these opinions are that the tree should come out, and, and again, I, look, I, it's not, it, it, assuming that you take the, you know, the owner at their word, they understood that the plan to be a certain way. Um, we're also responsible to make sure that they understand it correctly as well, so I mean, I think that it, it is where it is, I mean, we, you know, the, the, um, will, I think, you know, hopefully we'll learn from this, and we'll kind of say, oh, there, you know, these plans shouldn't really kind of exist in a vacuum, they really should kind of be part of the, you know, enforcement process, because obviously the tree was important to us, right, you know, and, and so we, we, we should certainly wanna put some focus on that, and make sure that we give it its best chance, regardless, it's difficult to, it's difficult to do that much around a tree and save it. And so they've agreed, they're not required to, but they've agreed to put in another large specimen tree.
I just personally, you know, just driving by there, and just seeing, you know, they, they had sign out, you know, dirt for sale, or whatever, you know, just whatever soil was there. And you, you just saw tractors, and they're just taking huge chunks out, and, you know, it's pretty obvious to anyone passing by that that's gonna kill a tree, I mean, it was, they were chopping in, 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 and, I mean, it was just, you didn't have to send somebody out there to even oversee it, it was obvious it was happening, and it was gonna kill the tree.
Well, the, the arborist.
Kind of blew my mind then.
No, without, without question, they had a tree protection fence that was actually a little bit further out than it needed to be. The question was, the difference between any excavation, or en- or excavation within the critical root zone inside the tree. Right, but what the arborist who wrote the plan said, oh no, it's on day one, you know, when you start disturbing around it, mulch the tree, keep it watered, keep it fertilized. The arborist that was, that was caring for the tree, that's not the village's arborist, interpreted it that that starts when you start working in the critical root zone, inside the fence, but the developer put the fence up very early on, and put it further out than it needed to be, to, to physically, like the tree protection zone. But obviously that was not enough, you know, that, that it, those other things, like, like mulching it and keeping it wet, no different like in a garden center, like I said, you can keep the, the, the tree ball, the ball, root balls have to be kept damp, you know, because the tree's stressed. And it's kind of the same situation, right, because the tree's been, the, the root structure has been massively reduced. Um, which it can survive, but it's gotta be kept wet, it's gotta be kept fertilized, it's gotta be kept, you know, but again, it's an old tree, so there's no, you know, but, I, I think we, I, I think what I'm saying is, I think we could have done better, I think on, on, on our side. Um, and, and, and held the, and held them to the plan, or helped them understand it if it was misunderstood. And that's something that will, you know, I hope that it will learn from, and it'll be part of, you know, that, if this were ever again, and I think it will be, because I think people now really value, trees, they used to kind of be, there was just like, I need to plant another one, and I think, I think that people are, um, really value trees as, as natural resources, and as, you know. So I think that will, um, I think, we might, you know, be running into this again, where it's part of a, you know, a large site plan approval, there aren't many, you know. Because again, in private property, we don't have any, our code doesn't a lot, doesn't really restrict, um, the removal of trees on private property. Except for steep slope stuff, things like that, for erosion. So. Okay, anything else? We have a motion to adjourn, are you, comment?
I had a question, uh, what are you guys, what role do you guys play, or are you trying to play in terms of, making cold spring more sustainable, and, you know, following the kind of environmental movement, like, what role do you guys play in any of it?
The planning board, the planning board is not a legislative body, like, we don't write code, and we don't, we don't put laws into effect. That's the village board, which is a legislative body, which can do things like, you know, you know, write laws to encourage, you know, you know, passive building, to encourage, you know, green energy sources, you know, to, the individual boards, like the H D R B, you know, can do things like, you know, understand solar panels, and understand that, you know, a hot water system has to be at a certain angle, you know, you can't move it, because you don't like the look of it, you know, it has to function a certain way. You know, so I mean, you have to accept the fact that you don't get the aesthetics you want, because this thing didn't exist in eighteen seventy. Right, you know, and so, yeah, it's not gonna look like a slate roof, but are you really gonna forego green energy, you know, for, you know, for materials? Especially in most cases, the materials are missing anyway, you know, it's not like they're removing historic fabric and putting, you know, solar panels in place. So I think that the, the individual boards can certainly understand the approval of those things, and make sure that it's, that they're, as they process the applications, that they're, you know, that they're, moving that stuff through quickly, and that they're understanding it, I think there, there was a little bit of, you know, there was a little bit of adjustment time for the H D R B, but I think they're very clear on solar panels, and things like that, because those things, they make, they make a big difference, the village, obviously the village board can have the biggest impact, because they're the legislative body, right? One thing that they voted for, which is to participate in a, in a, in a C C A, Community Choice Aggregation, which is, um, that's, it's a legislative action where you, the, you know, a community comes together, the town of Phillips Town, and then buys energy from a renewable source, and what you do is, by default, you can then, your, your electric service provider, right, you know, say it's like Green Mountain Energy, who does mostly, or wind farms, or things like that, that unless you opt out of it, when you open up your Central Hudson account, it's coming from a green renewable source, the village board, you know, signed on to that, the town board did. Um, so they're in the process, those things take a while to come, but the legislative bodies, like the village board that can actually make laws, are the ones that can have the most far-reaching impact. And certainly, you know, you know, encourage them, write them about, you know, what are you doing with respect to, you know, saving water with, you know, with solar panels on, you know, on village-owned properties, um, solar farms, we, we don't really have that much land to really do anything like that, but, um, the village board can have the most impact, planting trees helps, obviously, too, I mean, you know.
Yeah, Marathon could be, Marathon could be a big solar plant, couldn't it?
True.
Yeah.
We rely on what's in the code right now, to discharge our function.
Yeah, the planning board is basically, we're not, you know, we're not interpreting or writing, or we're not a legislative body, we basically just apply the code.
Cause she said to, somewhere in the code is to encourage green building, so.
It does, but we didn't put that in the code, the village board put that in the code.
How do you encourage green building now, how do you go about that?
It doesn't have a whole lot of teeth, I mean, so you basically can say, we'd like you to do, you know, green building, you can't force them to green buildings, there are codes, now that are saying that there's a certain percentage of it needs to be this, and a certain, if it's a certain number of square feet, they want you to look at energy consumption that is more restrictive, than what the national code is, or even the state or local code, right, so they're actually narrowing down to say, we don't want a bunch of, you know, really leaky buildings, that are really just continuing to, uh, to build in an old way, right, but, with the word encourage, it's, you know, there's.
And what it says is, the planning board shall promote these measures, and it had been talking about green building, to the greatest extent practicable during site plan review process. So, one of the things we promoted was, um, you know, we talk about the lights being aimed downward rather than up. We talk about not sending more water into our, our sewage system. And so, there are things that we, we can do, but we're not, the applicant brings the plan to us, we don't tell them.
One area where, you know, because my firm River Architects does passive buildings, right, so the ener- very low energy consuming buildings. And so, we've had several projects come to the planning board for review, and in, um, in counting, um, the lot area coverage, we've argued successfully to, um, not include the extra insulation required to make an energy efficient building. Especially when we're doing retrofits of an existing building, so, so that that's not, um, so we're basically not being penalized for conserving energy. Um, because you could make your buildings bigger, you know, like your usable habitable space bigger by making your walls as thin as possible, right? Um, but, you know, we make very thick walls.
As thick as possible.
Yeah. Carve out a little space inside.
Move to adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
The second? All favor. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So Matt, we're looking at the meeting time. It would be the.
So it's always the second.
Everyone's been referring to the code, James, that the code is, I think, being updated. And there was a committee that's been working on it for years. Continue, and they want to, um, attend one of their meetings, which are scheduled on the village website.
I heard it work.
And, uh, they can fill you in on the specifics that you're interested in. And you could wish your opinion that perhaps since, that they could have more teeth, as opposed to things that Judith wrote, it's all, do your best.
There are groups of trans citizens that are actively, um, pursuing.
Let me get in there, Bobby.